I figured, you know, Scotty and...
Was it a safe trip?
You know, don't be out there shaving ears. Sweeping with the brooms again. Scotty would retire right now and take that airport job. Scotty would retire and take that airport job.
Oh, yeah. No doubt, Dave. Yeah. Hi, Jesse.
Jerry, how's it going?
Not bad.
Scared me, chief. I thought you had a hat from the zip ties there for a minute.
I didn't realize Jerry had one up here. A lot of breath.
I carried it in my bag. You never know anything.
No.
No, I went back to every house.
Eblith City Council meeting, 5:30, October 6th. Council chambers, let's call it a order.
Council Rowsey?
Here.
Council Purpich?
Here.
Council Willis?
Here.
Acting Mayor Joe Quaidman?
Here.
Mayor Adamo?
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Minutes of the city council workshop meeting, September 9th. Minutes of the city council workshop, September 15th. Minutes of the city council workshop meeting, September 16th. Minutes of the city council workshop meeting, September 24th. And minutes of city council special meeting, September 29th. Can I get a motion?
So, second.
Motion by Perp, second by John. Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yeah.
Acting Mayor Joe Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Adamo?
Yes.
Okay, we have the approval of agenda. Is there any changes or anybody want to add anything? I think, uh... Do you have nothing?
I have nothing more to add than what went on Friday.
Okay, so can I get the approval of agenda?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Mr. Rowsey. Support by Mr. Willis. Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yeah.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, we're at F, appointment and presentations, which we don't have any. Move to G, the consent agenda. Can I take these both together? Or could they have to be separate? Okay, we're gonna go together. Approval of payroll, September 1st through the 15th. And approval of claims for September. Roll call. Our motion?
So moved.
By John?
Support.
Support by Perp?
And I will be abstaining for conflict of interest.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Abstain.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, we have a public hearing. None. We will root to new business. Consider purchasing Zamboni batteries from R&amp;R Specialties. And, uh, I'm gonna say something. I was, I don't know if I was lucky enough or not, but I was here when we got the last ones. They were 11,000 and we kinda balked at the price. You know, this, this is something that we have to have. You know, it's, it's part of doing the business. It keeps the hippodrome and everything going. So, is anything, anybody else have anything to say about it?
There's a motion passed.
Can I have a motion? To consider purchasing some Boney batteries from R&amp;R Specialties?
So moved.
Moved by Council Purpich. Can I get support?
You got my support.
Support by John Rowsey. Anybody got anything to say about it?
Looking at the price of seven years ago and looking at the price today, I think we're getting a deal. With the cost of materials and things going up and, I think it, plus installation. You know, installation and...
That's the same thing I looked at myself.
So, I don't, I don't think that's a bad price at all.
Okay, can I get a roll call vote?
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yeah.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to number two. Consider pay requests, number one, from 3D Concrete Construction Incorporated, in the amount of 45,000 for 2025 curb and sidewalk improvements.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Willis.
Support.
Support by Councilor Purpich. Anybody have anything to say?
Is this about the aver- sorry. Is this about the average sidewalk replacement we do every year?
Correct, yeah, we do up to 45,000.
I'm talking feet lengths and stuff, about the same amount.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't that much more per foot or linear foot this year than it was last year.
And the county...
There's always a little bit of a raise just because concrete goes up.
And the county gives us $15,000 on top of that.
Correct.
For, it's something that we've been doing for years and it's a good, good per thing for the city.
And I have bruised much of the work and they've done a, a, a great job once again.
You're having, you're having a tough time when the leaves are falling though.
Well, you know, they've done a fine job the last five years.
They have done.
They've been doing it, you know, and they kinda know what they're doing, so... Roll call vote.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yeah.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, we have number three. We have Tom Die from the MSA Professional Services for working on our wastewater treatment plant. He'd like to speak. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. What's in your packet is a proposal for the preliminary design for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. This includes items like geographic surveying, site visits by cannibal, electro, architectural, engineer, designers, as well as process. Really, this preliminary phase will really get down to defining the scope of the project. We did the facility plan and that's fairly general about here's the items we need to get in and we have provisions and so forth. As we get into design, we need to define exactly what we're doing so we can get that on the plan spec. It also include probably one geotop soil boring. That will be built directly to the city. That's not included in our proposal. But we do include like hazard security survey. We have people that do that. The couple buildings that we have to renovate may expand well and so we've gotta check for any hazards. Yeah, that is what this first phase is for. And then if the, if the scope will define, we'll move into final design and that'll be an amendment for another agreement proposal for that final design.
Anybody have any questions for Tom?
You don't, you don't appear to be as happy this time as you were the last time you were here. Well, I, I do have an update on funding that has some good news, so I've prepared on that.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? I hear nothing. Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
If you'd like to talk about, yeah?
Yeah, the funding?
Well, yeah, we need a motion.
Oh, they need a motion to consider it.
Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by John, supported by Perp. Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yeah.
Just throws me off screen. Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I thought I would take this opportunity to give a little update on where we're at with funding. The project is listed on the project priority list of all of the other projects that may request project funding from the state. The project ranks very high. It's number 11 out of, I don't know, 300 projects or something on the list. And there are three or four projects listed ahead of us that have already been funded. So I don't know why they're still on the list, but PFA just carries them forward. So that's pretty good news there that it gives us a much better opportunity or chance to get that T-Sig grant funding we've been talking about and possibly some affordability grant funding. And then this Thursday, I'll be coming up and met with Mayor Rowan, doing a presentation with the state representatives at the Hocke Hall of Fame who is supporting our request from the state for some funding, for state bonding money for that. The other thing is there's a small program called the Grant Navigator Grant, which is actually a grant for a consultant like us to help you find and apply for other grants. We've already completed the application. We talked to Jerry about it. And it's a $5,000 grant that we're awarded it. And it does go, like say, for a consultant to help you look and apply for project funding, specifically for grants. That's another piece of good news. So I'll probably next council meeting or once we know we're gonna be receiving this, then we will provide a proposed agreement to provide the services. The net to the city will be zero.
That's good. Good. Anybody got any other questions?
Thank you, Tom.
Who's gonna say thank you, Tom, for...
Yep. Thanks for showing up today.
Okay, we're gonna go to number four. Request from Kyle Elsner, Northern Fine Construction, for an extension to complete required constructions on block five, block one in Carter Circle. And I actually was up there and he ran into a little problem with the soil up there, which happens a lot. And he's just asking for an extension because he had to put more time in it and he is going to build. And I really believe he's gonna do a nice place out there. So I, I don't know if anybody has a problem with this?
Motion on the issue.
Okay, I would need a motion on issue to extend this time.
So moved.
Motion by Jim, can I get support?
Support.
Support by John Rowsey. Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yeah.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, it'll be nice up there when they start building the rest of the houses. Okay, roll number five. Consider bids for community center parking lot. Make a motion, consider, Joe. What do we have on that? I can't find the bids. John has the bids. The little bidder of the project is Masabi Batumis. And, uh... Based on a bid of 203,645 dollars and they beat everybody pretty good.
And came underneath the...
And it came underneath the engineer's estimate, which is always, always good.
And highly unusual.
You know, it's, yeah, it is. You know, when you look at it, it's like you're reading something that's misprinted. But it's pretty good. So can I get a motion?
Can, I'll make a motion with discussion.
Yep.
And I'll support it if you give me back my...
Okay, we got support, discussion?
Alan?
If, if I could have the gears of the room for a moment? Um, there are a few things on here that I was concerned about. Our removal of trees, our removal of sidewalk, et cetera. So as much as I am on board with the Louis Florida Masabi Batumis, I would just like the opportunity for myself and Council Purpich and Alan to meet with the people of Masabi Batumis, which we're all on the same page and things are being ripped up or torn out that we didn't want torn out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, uh, Mayor Rowan, what was brought up about the, uh, at the town hall meeting about the tree that was planted. I don't know where that is located. Do you know where that is?
So from what I understand, it is on the west side of the community center building near like, I think they're natural gas lines that stick up from this like a black painted pipe that goes around. I think it's natural gas. But I think it's that tree right there. And I'm gonna confirm with, um, Citizen Kelson just so he can make sure that we are talking about the correct tree.
And we don't, that's what I want to...
That tree to my worry about, but also large pine trees in that area as well. You really wanted to try and save.
Exactly. Just wanna make sure that, uh, that, that is, that tree is addressed and it's not in the scope of work that has to be done up there.
Well, then it sounds like we are gonna have to table this. How do I go about that?
Well, I'm not sure if it needs to be tabled. I just think that we just wanna make sure we talk with them before they start ripping stuff up and tearing stuff down, taking it as just we want.
So how, how about if we vote on this contingent that you guys meet with them and talk with them? Would that work, Joe?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay, can I get a roll call vote?
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yeah.
Council Willis?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
We got a new comedy duo.
Yes. Um, Alan, can we hold to your name?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, Masabi Tourists, can Masabi Tourists give us the timeline of what we were hoping for then by having at least a dirt or compacted dirt area done before the winter?
Yeah, they, they indicated, I just verified with them on the bid that if awarded promptly and the weather allows, they were gonna get the gravel in this, this fall at some point. Before winter.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we have the opportunity to have the building open. And if we really wanna have it open by the spring, it'll be late. I, I'd just like to at least have a functioning parking lot there anyway. So thank you.
Okay, anything else on this matter? We will move on to number six. Consider bids for the demolition of 1502 West First Street in Eblith. That would be the old Raneker store. I myself went through the bids and as long as everybody else did, and I was surprised, it came in not bad.
I have a motion after the motion is done.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to the place where I grew up drinking Mountain Dew and peanuts.
Motion by Mr. Rowsey, can I have support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Purpich with discussion. Go ahead, Mayor.
So my, my question was, I don't wanna second guess anybody, unless it's what they do for a living, but when everybody else gave somewhere north of $6,000 to throw it away and that one came in, I'm guessing they just set it as a lump sum at 34,000, but there's not gonna be a hidden cost in the disposal of the contents?
From what, when I looked on that, that was it. Because they even said that that's the final price. Because it said some people had $6,000 for demolition. Am I right, Tom?
Yeah, that's correct. So they, they gave the industry a $1 fee to dispose of the contents of the building. I believe they did a project in town with a similar bid format a few years ago. They had a company and what I, way that worked is that they did clean out just some brief stuff out of it, but they paid the higher tipping fee at the landfill to get rid of it and sort of do what's in the building.
So what we see is 34,830 dollars. That is what we are, it's gonna cost us.
Correct.
Is that right? Is that all right, Mayor?
That's, just wanted to clarify, occasionally when everybody else wants so much, that's all.
Yeah, there was kinda something when we were reading this and we saw there was that big of a difference. So can I get a roll call?
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Abstain for conflict of interest.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, pay application. 004 from Peterson Sheet Metal Incorporated, amount of 33,429.65 for Eblith multi-purse building boiler reconstruction project. Moved by Councilor Willis, supported by Council Purpich. Roll call, discussion?
This is, this is our last bill?
It's not the last bill.
Okay.
There's a balance to finish and a hundred thousand and separate controls and things like that, so.
Okay.
Just kind of leaves it along.
All right.
Now they're weight out of the wheel.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to number eight. Commercial lease between the City of Eblith and Seenic Rivers Health Services.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Purpich. Support by John Rowsey. Any discussion on this one?
Is there any big differences in this? Same standard that they had last time.
It's a, it's a big plus for the city of Eblith. I don't know. Our citizens are, we're all thorough and, uh, really good they are over there and...
There's a lot of traffic up there.
I can assure you that they're, they're very busy.
Yeah, so, no. I'm, I'm glad they're here and I hope we can continue to do business with them in this way or any other way.
This way or any other way to help them get a building.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Jackie?
I'm here.
Um, can I get a point two on the lease term? Is it a mistake or do I just understand how we type these out? I have November 1st and 24th?
No, you don't miss it. It didn't get picked up by us or, or Seenic Rivers, so. But it came to my attention, I took it over how? The doctor keep her, he's like, oh, sorry, I missed it too. So we're just making it all right. I mean, all correct, I mean.
Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, propose a budget for improvements to the multipurpose community center building.
So I was wanting to clear your recap when we talked about Eblith. But instead I decided to just announce that I'll be working with Amanda from the women's staff. Remember what we showed you was planning level estimates? We're meeting with her next week to get kind of hone in, make sure we're on the right page for her to come up with better estimates since we're planning level, which means first step to bring that over back to you. Just wanted you to know that we're working on it and I'll work with her and we'll keep moving as quickly as we can.
Well, good. Well, thank you for that. Anybody got any questions? No? Okay, we're gonna move on. Resignation, resignation letter from Julia Knapper, firefighter.
So moved.
Moved by Council Purpich.
Support.
Support by Councilor Willis. Any discussion? I think we should thank her for her services.
Absolutely.
And wish her good luck.
Sorry to see her leave.
Anybody else?
Julie was a good, good firefighter. She's got a lot of irons in the fire and she had to clip a balloon off the stack somewhere. But as in life, there's always a chance of a balloon coming back.
That's good. Okay, did I get a motion already for this stuff? Okay, roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to number 11. A resignation letter from Lauren Seaman, library clerk. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Council Rowsey, supported by Council Purpich. Anybody, discussion on this one? I suppose we should give a letter of thanks and thank her for her time and wish her the best of luck. Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Moved. Number 12. Authorized posting and advertising for a part-time library clerk.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Purpich.
Support.
Support by Councilor Willis. Anybody have anything to say? Roll call.
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, number 13. Resolution accepting donation from Energizing Eblith.
So moved.
Moved by Council Purpich.
Support.
Support by Council Rowsey. Do we have any discussion on this?
Adam, you wanna...
I figured Adam would have something to say.
Do you have a?
So this is Energizing Eblith versus movement and donating to the city of Eblith. Goal here was create a structure inside the dog park. It's gonna be built over the fence that will buy the large dogs from the small dogs. Uh, Jerry, do you remember, I'm not sure I remember with it? Eight by 20 or eight by 16, do you remember?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was 10 by 16, I believe. Right in that area. I don't have the exact...
I'm gonna have it put up roughly eight feet on both sides of the fence. Put a bench for the slabs, there's for people in places to sit to get out of the sun, get out of the rain, whatever it may be. Uh, just help me get a little more comfortable location to have that park. I, I perceive this to be the first of many donations that we accept from Energizing Eblith as time goes forward.
I did go by the dog park area. I see the fencing is just about complete or is it complete?
It is complete.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. We just have a few touching ups to do before, uh, before we're open.
Do we have an estimated time of the grand opening?
We'll be open by this weekend.
By this weekend?
Yep.
Are you giving out dog bones?
I personally won't.
Any prices for our first dog in here?
We're coming up a lot of them out there. Okay, can I get a roll call?
Council Rowsey?
Yes.
Council Purpich?
Yes.
Council Willis?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaidman?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Motion carries. It is.
I got a dog now.
No, you could take your dog and walk there. No, you could take your dog and walk there.
Yes, I can.
Okay, number fourteen, proposal from Bolton and Menk for professional services at the former high school site. Everybody have a chance to look at it?
I'll make, I'll make the motion when we consider this.
Motion by Counselor Purpich.
Support.
Support by Counselor Rossy, discussion?
Uh, is this above and beyond what you guys already do for the City of Evlith? You want, is it, what, from my understanding, you want to participate in the engineering then that goes into this building?
So, what this is, is working process had brought up at a meeting of the city and city staff to form a PUD for the apartment complex that we've been planning for, and this would help to, one, plot that area where that apartment and townhomes is, second part, set it up for the city services that would need to happen on, there would be adjacent street roads, utilities, stormwater retention, stuff like that, that is all being planned or be looked at from a city standpoint with conjunction of developments such as apartment or parking in apartments and townhomes adjacent.
Mayor Rowan, do you have anything else to add to that?
Not a lot, Alan, kinda hit on the head, but that is the spot of where we are at in the development of the school property, PUD meaning planned unit development, and it's just kind of a way of blending together everything that we're doing on that site so the land can be maximized and zoned as, as needed. It is, it's not caused a hiccup by any means, it's just the spot at which we're at as we are moving forward with Charles Anderson.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification on that.
Anybody else have anything to say about it? And roll call?
Counselor Rossy?
Yes.
Counselor Purpich?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaiden?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan? Mayor Rowan?
Okay, move on to number fifteen, pay request number two from Two Easy DBA Joel Asop Escavating in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eight dollars and eighty-five cents for the airport water main project.
Make the motion?
Motion by Counselor Purpich.
Support.
Support by Counselor Willis, anybody got anything to say about it?
Is that buttoned up? No, I don't see any big machines out there anymore.
So, it's not quite complete, we have a punch list open on this still, mainly cosmetic in yards, curb stops, there's a few residents that have said comments back to staff and our staff.
Breaking shovel stuff.
Joel Asop, did it indicate that they were gonna be back in there later this week to start addressing some of them, they didn't know if they'd get them all done later this week, but there's a fire hydrant still removed, but largely the construction's complete, just a few punch list items.
And that, there's that bunch of spare parts that are still sitting alongside the fence, at least they were there.
Yeah.
Get them, to get that stuff out of there.
Anybody else? Roll call?
The remaining things that you're saying that have to be done, are those costs that come through, or is this part of the final payment of the twenty-one?
Well, so there'll probably be a cost on the removal of hydrants, but the, the balance is just gonna be retained, so that's, that helps still.
Anything else? Roll call?
Counselor Rossy?
Yes.
Counselor Purpich?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaiden?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, number sixteen, quote from Rogers Online Corporation for Interactive Technology for Meetings. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Willis.
Support.
Support by Counselor Rossy, no discussion?
What is this request for, Jackie? Technical services, what?
Yeah, so this is, so we can set, have meetings up here with other groups, sort of like we have done down at Randers Plaza, large screen TV, or, yes, TV on a cart and a laptop computer, so we can do Teams or Zoom, so we can kind of get with the twenty-twenty-five.
Oh.
And I do want to ask, I want to ask our technology person Roger, how this can interface or do things like this?
I was just gonna say, that's what it was like.
And then I asked him about it, can that can interface with the current microphone system, because I had to ask the mayor to go on mute because I was hearing some feedback, so I will ask that before placing any orders, but just kind of get us with the program so we can start being more functional at some of our other meetings that we have, or somebody is not on stage.
Yeah, because, you know, the meetings we've had off property and needed Zoom or whatever, you know, they're just not, but to get a, a bigger screen up here and be able to have those meetings here would be.
I think the Zoom meetings are great, I mean, look at the mayor, does Zoom meetings great, people realize he's in his underwear.
I know, I'm gonna pay for that one.
Jackie, I had one question, no, just reading through this, I suspect this does not include that more sophisticated camera system like they have at IRB.
So, I asked about that, and that special order upgrade to the Bose has got, the speaker is better than the camera, believe it or not, it's kind of the camera, do I think it's gonna be as fantastic as one of the agency that we use, I think that was called an AWO camera, or something like that, but I'll double check with Roger, maybe I can do a demo so we can see, because that camera, remember how you sort of looked on the shoulder and squatting there, it was kinda hot, I've been asking for a demo, you want placing the order?
Oh, so that, that's actually under the Bose, I thought that was just for speakers, I guess to upgrade for the Bose.
Yeah, but the speaker also has the camera in.
Oh.
Yeah, so I'll do some double checking before signing on the line, placing the order.
Very good, thank you.
Actually looked at this and it's, I think it's very reasonable, you know, on the prices compared to everything and.
Yeah, considering.
Jackie?
Yes?
The funds you ever put out aside for me to have computer, whatever was needed for my role coming in, you're utilizing those funds into this?
Absolutely.
Perfect, because I don't have any either want for state purchase me to sell, so I'll use my own, so I'd like to see it here. My only question regarding it is, when you're talking about this, is state brought the picture of what we, what we see over at N I triple R, correct?
I'm going to say yes, in fact, I think what I'll do is I'll call over there to the agency and have somebody take a picture of that and send it to me, and I'll get some more questions answered, if he needs to revise this, we will hold off, and then I'll do some more, but I'll, I'll show them what that looks like.
I, I really, I really like what they have over there, it works extremely well, and when we were doing our interviews, Counselor Willis, I felt like that was a very easy way of doing it with a lot less stress and all these things now.
I'll do some more checking.
One more question, the size of the television, is that gonna be adequate, fifty inches?
So, fifty is.
It's not very big.
This is thirty-six, so, what like that.
Yeah, the one down at IRB is probably eighty.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, whatever it is.
So, I think putting that on a cart in this size building might be a little bit long, but I last know the size also, why not? And secondly, how about if I just bring this back in two weeks?
That's a good point.
Yeah, I know that, that the size of the television, the cost isn't that much difference for the bigger TVs.
I'll check into that.
I think the code officer probably would be able to utilize that as well for presentations.
Right.
Okay, so, are we tabling this one?
Sure.
Can I get a motion to table this one to two weeks?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Rossy.
Support.
Support by Counselor Purpich, roll call?
Counselor Rossy?
Yes.
Counselor Purpich?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Quaiden?
Yes.
Mayor Rowan?
Yes.
Okay, G, board and liaisons update.
So, I guess we'll start with Jim. The airport authority is still looking for a manager for the airport, it's twenty hours a week, some rules and regulations that have to be observed and that he, that that person is gonna have to check into with the FAA, and there's snow removal and general maintenance involved, so, we're still looking, applications gone on there, I don't know, Joe, I think I told you, you know, being on the authority, that we've interviewed at least ten people, had a couple that were just gonna be right there and taken, then all of a sudden they said no, so, no, it's, yeah, it's just, it's just a hard thing, so, that's what we're working on, but other than that, everything else at the airport is, is going pretty well with the people we got out there managing it right now.
Thank you. Counselor Willis?
I think we are ahead of the EDA meeting by one week, I will see if Counselor Rossy wants to report on each, since we sit on both.
Why do you always say? We had a wonderful attorney meeting, it was a budget meeting, everything is pretty well going as planned, however, be advised during these tumultuous times, we're at the mercy of the federal government for some of our funding and such, and we are waiting on the outcome of what's going on in Washington, so, but other than that, the numbers are pretty much in line with they were last year, and we don't see any foreseeable problems depending on the federal funding endowment. Did I screw up?
No.
You did.
Anything else?
Amendmental, Charlie. That's about it.
Okay, draw.
Just a couple of quick things, one to clarify, that roof shelters fourteen by eighteen, five feet tall, and then I talked to Tom with Masabi Bep, and they're planning to get into between North Court and South Court to clear the brush and trees, and probably the middle of November, they want the ground trees, because they're gonna bring some heavy equipment down the streets, so that's their update, and when they think they'll get in there, they'll start clearing that out.
Did we lose any with the wind over the weekend?
Lose any.
Any trees?
No, surprisingly, no.
That's surprising, that's good. Chief?
Just a quick reminder of folks at home, calendar parking season is upon us, if you're new to town or not, don't understand it, give us a call or stop down to see us, first two weeks we've been giving out warnings, till the fifteenth, then we'll start getting tickets and whatnot, so, it's here.
You got enough of them, warning tickets?
We got plenty.
I bet you do.
Alan?
Sure, quick update, Uhl Brothers is now working along Hattrick on the water system, some water main replacement in there, and they'll also be on the east side of the highway by our super eight between there and the connection, they'll probably be in there for a couple of weeks, there's gonna be some sharp shutdowns, but we'll do our best to notify them before them happen, so, that's all I got.
Good, thank you. Mayor Rowan, do you have something to say?
Uh, just a couple of things, wanna, wanna thank everybody for the great talk tonight, what a great time we had off of eighteen-plus vehicles, community businesses, our, our vehicles, thank you, Jerry, for the staff and everybody coming out, giving, helping hand, they're great, the kids love having them around, I thought it was a good opportunity for people. Thank you, everybody that came to the town hall, I think that went really well this last time, they've all gone well, I should say, but we got a lot of information on the people that has been logged in. So, sitting up there, it is definitely reflecting in the community, so I thank all of you gentlemen who are really being a help, and the last one, I just wanted to thank you all, remember the Wilderness, a hockey team that plays actively inside our beautiful Hippodrome, had their first home game October tenth and October eleventh, so, the upcoming weekend, so, people of Evlith, come on and enjoy the Wilderness hockey.
Okay, thank you. Steph, you got anything to say today? Jackie?
I'm good, thank you.
Well, Joel?
Nothing after Mayor Quaiden.
Are you sure?
No.
Okay, well, everybody have a great night and, uh, meeting adjourned. Why does it start all in, sorry? The baby's at the start, it's not a story.
Yeah, we explained it, P P.
...